Ang susunod na programa ay Rated PG. Patnubay at gabay ng magulang ay kailangan sa mga batang manonood.
Honorable members of the Sanmeryan panel of the April 4, 2022 regular session of the Sanmeryan is hereby called to order. As you can read in the invitation, there will be a program for all purely the model. And this will be followed by the singing of the National Anthem. You may very please stand. Our spirit reading is that and not a book of chant that always will be answered. The teacher spoke again of the Lord Jesus. I am the life to whom we will pass sin and our worship. But they have the life to do. The person is challenged now. Where you are appealing as your own witness. Your destiny is not further. This has answered. Everything I see by my own behalf, my destiny is further. For I know where I came from and where I am going. But you have no idea where I come from or where I am going. You just remain on standard. I pass judgment on you. But if I do judge, my decisions are true. Because I do not judge. As done with the father who sent me. In your own truth, had a statement that the destiny of doing this is true. I am one who is inspired by myself. My other witness is the father who sent me. Then he asked again, where is your father? You will not know me for my father. He says, "Your father." If you knew me, you would know my father also. It spoke these words quite similar to the book of God. Yet it faced with a very difficult book. Yet no one says, "Man, this is our time to take care." Let us pray.
Honorable Judge, today the guy is tired.
On most gracious and loving heavenly Father, thank you for being as heavy, very unashamed. Thank you for being thus supportive to discuss important matters that will be lifted up. As we start our session, guide and unite in one of us. We ask the minister that we will come out with a sessions that will help in the prosperity of our city and for the unity of everybody. We might ask so boldly, and every session will end with you. Pulling us from the waters, after forty two system is against us. Is I pray, the living Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior for their work. Amen.
Amen.
For we pray here. Merciful and compassionate Father, we thank you in our need to save our protection against the COVID-19 virus that has destroyed and having been in lives. We ask you now to look upon us with love and by your helping hand to spare the fear of sickness and death, restore our hope, and strengthen our faith. We pray that the guide be called task of my food for this success and to save its transmission. We thank you for the vaccines developed, make possible the only hands. There is our efforts to use these vaccines to end the pandemic in our country. We pray for our health workers that lead me mainstream for the safety confidence and for their compassion, strength and commitment, protection of others where both those afflicted may be restored to health or take those who are for them. But we pray for those who have died. Give us the grace in these prime times, pour food and food of all and to help those in need. Give our concern compassion for each other. See us to these places and lead us to the question and to lives. But for this, to all of Jesus Christ, those who are putting something to you. In the living and the voice create that forever and ever. Amen.
Amen.
The Deputy Director of the Sanmeryan is in due and hold of.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. The Honorable Cindy Weiss, we are excited, please sir, arrange yours be amounted. Present, the Honorable Sophie Maguam, present. Honorable Jesse Maguam, present. The Honorable Joey B. Acclaw, present. Honorable Donna Ardu, present. The Honorable Isaiah C. Gao, Junior, present. Honorable Francis P. Montero, present. The Honorable Arthur T. Winanorja, present. Honorable Louis B. O'Dass, Junior, present. The Honorable Irene Naladwa, present. Honorable Joseph E. Montina, present. Honorable Alfred W. D. Junior, of official time. The Honorable Wayne B. Swoon Sagra, present. And the Honorable Julie B. Morrod, present. We want an official time, sir, deciding officer.
We have one hundred person in attendance. All of these hereby declared. The Honorable my Detective for Peter, in a planet, the guests inside presently are present. Thank you, sir deciding, for the grace. Session, certainly welcome for yesterday, Mr. Boyler Zero, Mr. Robic, Antasola, and Mr. Edel Anthony Vasole. The persons. Thank you, my Detective, for letters. I, there is nothing to be... There is not showing that... There is one which interested the bill of himself, the people's time. So that could be literally the problem. The minutes of the regular session date March 28, 22. Nine per hour members except one particular time, the Honorable Alfred May Bugeno, as well as the journal of the regular session, the December panel of so, they date March 28, 2022. The journal number seventeen, and it date nine per hour members except the one on the particular time, the Honorable Alfred May Bugeno, as to move for his time. Is there any objection remarks on the motion to approve the journal number seventeen and minutes of March 28, 22 regular session? The chair here is done. The motion is approved. Page from the report. Page from the report number two-two, dash zero-four, dash zero-five-six. My calling the committee chair, committee on transport.
The gentleman from San Meryan, he called the Honorable Jerry Big and Doc Senior, he recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee report number two-two, dash zero-four, dash zero-five-six. With the subject, uh, issues for renewal change of unit in tabs. Shewans of new in tabs, shewans of provisional in tabs, and shewans of new enterprise. So greetings, the party committee for review one, congratulations are the following. Seven applications for the renewal in tabs. One application for the change of unit. One application for the shewans of new in tabs. Two applications for the shewans of provisional in tabs. And one application for the shewans of new enterprise. Upon the review, the committee chose that these applicants have submitted all the party members and documents this is only for the re-approachment of their applications. Therefore, the applicants are qualified for the place to put higher the days of specific health in the city. Therefore, it is recommended that the subject applications be approved. As the president in the act committee, I recommend for the adoption of committee report number two-two, dash zero-four, dash zero-five-six. And the address proposed safety resolution number zero-seven-two, dash two-zero-two-two. And resolution of working applications for renewal in tabs, the change of unit, shewans of new in tabs, shewans of provisional in tabs, and shewans of new enterprise. Pass it on second and final reading.
Is there any comment? Remarked on the recommendation of the committee chair, committee on transportation, regarding its committee report number two-two, dash zero-four, dash zero-five-six, including the transoport safety resolution verdict number six, number zero-seven-two, dash twenty-twenty-two, that can be passed on second and final reading. The chair here is done. Majority vote, the votes, please.
On the recommendation of the committee chair, committee on transportation, having no intention, is to move to pass for acceptance, committee report number two-two, dash zero-four, dash zero-five-six. And to pass on second and final reading, the proposed safety resolution number zero-seven-two, dash two-zero-two.
There is a motion that the committee report number two-two, dash zero-four, dash zero-five-four of the committee on transportation be accepted. And that the transoport safety resolution verdict number zero-seven-two, dash twenty-twenty-two be passed on second and final reading. Is there any objection? Comment? The chair here is done. The motion is approved.
B. Committee report number two-two, dash zero-four, dash zero-five-seven. My calling the lead committee chair, the chairman of committee on health.
The gentleman from Lower Jamba, the Honorable Arthur T. Winanorja, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Joint report number two-two, dash zero-four, dash zero-five-seven. The committee on health and committee on union, hard party and gender equality, which was referred. The following subject matter, please. Ordinance number seventy-six, dash two-zero, of the Sanmeryan family of the Sanis of the New York. The title and ordinance, which is fifteen, the third is the fifth of development families and abilities in children in years zero-to-five years old and providing funds. A joint committee hearing was called on March 25, uh, of 2022, 19:00 AM, and ordered to discuss. Mrs. Annalo Elsuan, technically consultant, technical consultant. Early detection program expanded the intent and importance of the same ordinance, which was enacted on October 5 of 2028, in which, according to her, it is about the health and early development of children at the early stage from zero-to-five years old. With this, it requires an intensive monitoring of the children by the health worker. But there is a need for training of the nurses, BSWs, nutrition workers, and others in line with the job. Thus, the early detection education team is being formed in the provincial government of Misabis Occidental for the purpose. Mrs. Juan, together with her staff, are requesting the MJU of Oroqueta, who is joint committee, to support the same ordinance and be implemented in the barangays of this city. The Honorable Joey Acclaw remarked that this ordinance could be a big help to the children of early stage, and instruments to adapt the same in the city and also to enact the local ordinance for its active role. For this, Mr. Presiding, it was in consensus of arriving of unanimous, honorable recommendations. There are two recommendations, Mr. Presiding. One, passing on the can final reading of the proposed resolution number zero seven-three, dash two-zero two-two, strongly supporting ordinance number seventy-six, dash two-zero of the Sanmeryan Pananabigan of the Sanis Occidental. The title and ordinance instituting the early detection of developing families and the abilities of children in years zero-to-five years old and providing funds. In the act of the committee, Mr. Presiding, I recommend for the acceptance and adoption of the first recommendation, passing on second and final reading of the proposed resolution number zero-seventy, dash two-zero-two-two.
Is there any comment? Remarks on the recommendation of the committee chair, chair of committee on health and the committee on child family and gender equality that, uh, the proposed resolution number zero-seventy, dash twenty-twenty-two be passed on second and final reading. The chair here is done. Majority for letter three-two-three, correct.
On the recommendation of the committee chair, committee on health, as far as the recommendation number one of the joint committee report number two-two, dash zero-four, dash zero-five-seven, taking the lead, passing on second and final reading, the proposed resolution number zero-seventy, dash two-zero-two-two, strongly supporting the ordinance number seventy-six, dash two-zero of the Sanmeryan Pananabigan of the Sanis Occidental, the title of the ordinance instituting early detection of developing families and disabilities in children ages zero-to-five years old and providing funds. Objection, is to move for adoption of recommendation number one, the joint committee report number two-two, dash zero-four, dash zero-five-seven.
There is a motion, uh, uh, recommendation number one. Passing on second and final reading, the proposed resolution number zero-seventy-three, dash twenty-twenty-two is strongly supporting the ordinance number seventy-six, dash fifty, of the Sanmeryan Pananabigan. The reading be passed on second and final reading. Is there any objection? Comment, or whether she will stand, motion be approved.
Any position, Mr. Presiding?
Please continue.
The second recommendation is to pass it on. Passing on first reading, the proposed ordinance number zero-eight, dash two-seven-two-two, may as the second average, to three divided.
The Sanmeryan, the Sanmeryan is so requested.
Proposed city ordinance number zero-eight, dash twenty-twenty-two of the Child Community, for the health and okay of women, child, family, and gender equality. And ordinance stipulating the early detection of developmental delays and disability disabilities in children ages zero-to-five years old in the city of Oroqueta and providing funds for the first reading.
Thank you, madam, to get them. You're the doctor.
May respectfully refer the proposed city ordinance number zero-eight, dash two-zero-two-two, on first reading, the committee on health.
The joint proposed ordinance number zero-eight dash twenty-twenty-two is referred to the committee on health.
C. Committee report number two-two, dash zero-four, dash zero-five-eight. My calling the committee here, the committee on environment, protection, and natural resources.
The lady, the honorable lady of the book, sorry, the Honorable Eileen in La Leva, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee report number ninety-two, dash zero-five, dash zero-five-eight. Committee environment, protection, and natural resources, which was referred in subject matter. The deputy there, twenty-two, twenty-four, and twenty-two-two, of City Atmosphere Command of the Union for add the absence of the city mayor, requesting is focused by past exhibition. Authorizing city mayor, General Mayor of La Costa to enter into Moa, with the Dean of RDM in connection with the bioweist waste shredder and co-poster given by the Dean of RDM to the city government of Oroqueta. Together with attached to post exhibition number zero-seven-four, dash twenty-two-two. Authorizing the Honorable City Mayor, General Mayor of La Costa, to enter into the running of the department by between the local government unit of Oroqueta and Department of Development, Natural Resources, and Environmental Management Bureau in granting by the waste shredder and co-poster for Oroqueta City. Engineer Howard Lee Abbott, who is always in the city public services, can believe that there is always a space occupied by the value bioweist shredder and co-poster. However, as for these powers to plan, they are only designated for the current request and still the process. Meanwhile, engineer she knows the role of the CGDH1, also O-CBS, assuring the body that as far as the maintenance of the equipment is concerned, it can be charged under the appropriate budget for repair and maintenance, specifically machinery and equipment in the office. The Environment Management Bureau can be served as the lead agency in the organization of solid waste management in the country in coordination with all the partners and stakeholders to provide violence and technical assistance regarding the certain waste management strategies and options to the use. Whereas the senior of Daca has shown interest to participate in the project and has agreed to fulfill its requirements by the returns and conditions stipulated in the memorial group of the unit. As this city has made a decade as one of the recipients of bioweist shredder and co-poster in another consistent with technical specifications and provisions under the agreement. And the same is measured, this body considered the request of the local chief executive laurels specifically including the solid waste management practices of the people in the city. Hence, the process no decision that is taken. After a call, Mr. Asher, the mother, the committee in the process no tension under request of the local chief executive. Therefore, in that regard, the self again related verdict, the committee respectfully recommends to pass a second and final reading, and in attached to post exhibition number zero-seven-four, twenty-twenty-two, entitled, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor, General Mayor of La Costa to enter into the run of the company by between the local government unit of Oroqueta and Department of Natural Resources, Developmental Management Bureau in granting by the waste shredder and co-poster for Oroqueta City. Passing it to second and final reading.
Is there any gentleman or lady who would like to make some comment remarks regarding the proposed resolution number zero-seven-four, dash twenty-twenty-two in relation to committee report number twenty-two, dash zero-four, dash zero-five-eight? Well, I'm not known. Uh, I'm glad you're not a lot. I'm a good fellow, I know. Have you seen what I'm making?
Uh, well, I'm not a good person, but I'm not here in San, uh, uh, in San Diaflor, uh, on the downside. It's downside.
In, uh, more interesting in my bioweist Bio waste shredder. So, I'm a woman. Uh, bio waste, so, oh, so my script, I mean. I'm a woman.
I'm a woman. I'm a woman.
Bio waste, man, bio waste. So, my. My wife, my wife.
I'm a woman.
Huh? Uh-huh. Okay. So. Very interesting, I'm a woman, my wife, she's a composter, my wife. Um, uh, I'm a woman, my wife, she's a composter. My wife, she's a shredding compost, so we're not, or a, a, but I'm a woman, so. On post, on post, that's different. No? Well, anyway, uh, highly difficult, eh? Um, so, any more comment? But she don't have time, and but I don't have time, or what, delivery? Uh, okay. That's far, the chair hears, uh, no other would like to make some comment, so, maybe we will leave. The problem.
Thank you, sir. Recommendation of the committee chair, committee on environment, protection and natural resources. With no objection. It should move the adopted committee report number two-two, that's four, that's zero five eight. This will pass on second and final reading, that's proposed city resolution number zero seven four, that's two zero two.
It has been moved by the majority to read it. That for a report number two-two, that's zero four, that's zero five eight, be adapted and that the attached proposed city resolution number two, zero seven four, that's twenty twenty-two, as described. Be passed on second and final reading. Is there any objection? Comment? The chair hears none, the motion is approved.
See. Committee report number two-two, that's zero four, that's zero five nine. I calling the committee here, committee on land use and zoning.
The gentleman from, from this one, oh no. The honorable George, he, he recognized.
And final reading. Um, I would like to know. Uh, the chair, this deciding officer would like to know. What is the subject matter of the congressional donation act? Traditional, congressional donation for the state. What is the term of the presidential donation? Is it already submitted in the name of? It's specified when we discuss the matter. Yes, I think so. Under the conditions, under one of the conditions of the judicial condition acceptance, uh, for a work, uh, the required that this condition, the fine data and society that this condition is sufficient to find the second condition. Number one, that the donor should introduce improvement in all insurance that be due to three years or five years from execution of this document. That in that case, that the property related to the number used by the donor, the donor shall return back to the owner with the same right to obtain compensation.
Ah, very good, okay. So, uh, that is the usual term of donations on a bit of donation. By the LDU, or any agency for that matter. Okay, thank you. He will read, uh, the issue. Very good. So, here are my comments. Dona, majority pro leader, number one.
Thank you for writing on the recommendation of the committee on values and zoning pertaining to the acceleration for a special fund by the committee on finance, budget, and appropriations. With no objection, I shall move adoption of the report number 22-04-059. And to pass on second and final reading, it has proposed OCP resolution number 075-202.
There is a motion that joint committee report number 22-04-059 be accepted and approved. And that, of course, seeking resolution number 775-2020 attachment rule as the trial is passed on second and final reading. Is there any objection? Under the part seven, Chair Hirston, no motion is approved.
E. Committee report number 22-04-060. May I call in the committee chair, committee on finance, budget, and appropriations?
The gentleman from Calusor, who will be at last, is written.
Thank you, Mr. Tussell Officer and the majority pro leader. Committee report number 22-04-060, with the subjects and the applicable budgets for CY 2022. Of Balangay Bunga, in a total amount of 349,461; Balangay Leyawan, in a total amount of 257,230; Balangay Luwatahan, in a total amount of 318,032; Balangay Pahis, in a total amount of 559,320 pesos; Balangay Sinote, in a total amount of 37,000,218; Balangay Tiyabang Alto, in a total amount of 252,230; Tiyabang Kapper, in a total amount of 257,767; and Balangay Aperlobo, in a total amount of 390,470. Mr. Tussell Officer, the above eight mentions of the applicable budget for CY 2022 was reviewed by the committee on financial and administrative, subject to budgeting, accounting, and operating laws and regulations. And behalf of the committee, this presentation recommends for acceptance and adoption of committee report number 22-04-060. And to pass on second and final reading, the attached proposed city resolution number 076-2022, entitled a resolution declaring the applicable budget for CY 2022, Balangay Bunga, Leyawan, Luwatahanan, Pahis, Sinote, Tiyabang Alto, Tiyabang Kapper, and Aperlobo, all of these cities operative in its entirety, Mr. Tussell Officer.
Is there any comment? Remarked on the recommendation of the committee chair. Committee on finance, budget, and appropriations pertaining to its committee report number 22-04-060. And the tax proposed city resolution number 076-2022 is passed on second and final reading. Chair Hirston, majority pro leader, please proceed for reading.
Under the recommendation of the committee chair, committee on finance, budget, and appropriations pertaining to the eight, the applicable budget, the respective balangays. With no objection, I shall move adoption of committee report number 22-04-060, including the attached proposed city resolution number 076-2022 on second and final reading.
It has been moved by the majority pro leader. That committee report number 22-04-060 be adopted and accepted. And that the proposed city resolution number 076-2022 has been to be passed on second and final reading. Is there any objection? The Chair Hirston, the motion is approved.
If committee report number 22-04-061, may I call in the committee chair, committee on finance, budget, and appropriations?
The gentleman from Calusor, he is written.
Thank you, Sir Tussell Officer and Majority Pro Leader. Committee report number 22-04-061, with the subject, Balangay Summental Budgets. Number one, CY 2022. Of Balangay Apel, in a total amount of 59,403; Balangay Bunga, in a total amount of 45,000; Balangay Aperlobo, in a total amount of 54,000; Balangay Bilaplo, in a total amount of 50,000. Uh, Mr. Tussell Officer, uh, the above four, Balangay Summental Budgets was reviewed and found operative in its entirety, subject to budgeting, accounting, and operating rules and regulations. And behalf of the committee, this presentation recommends for acceptance and adoption of committee report number 22-04-061. And passing on second and final reading, the tax proposed city resolution number 077-2022, entitled a resolution declaring the appropriations number 03-2022 of Balangay Apel and the appropriations number 01-2022 of Balangay, uh, Balangay Bunga, Aperlobo, and Bilaplo all of the cities operative in its entirety, Mr. Tussell Officer.
Is there any comment? Remarked on the recommendation of the committee chair, committee on finance, budget, and appropriations regarding its committee report number And the tax proposed city resolution number 077-2022 is clearly passed on second and final reading. The Chair Hirston, majority pro leader, please proceed for reading.
Under the recommendation of the committee chair, committee on finance, budget, and appropriations pertaining to the Balangay Summental Budget of the four respective balangays. With no objection, I shall move adoption of committee report number 22-04-061. And to pass on second and final reading, it has proposed city resolution number 077-2022.
There is a motion that committee report number 22-04-061, the committee on finance, budget, and appropriations be accepted and adopted. And that the attached proposed city resolution number 077-2022 is passed on second and final reading. Is there any objection? Comment? The Chair Hirston, the motion is approved.
G. Committee report number 22-04-062, may I call in the committee chair, committee on education and culture?
She, Lady, uh, Moe, she has no, don't have any, he is written.
Thank you, Sir Tussell Officer, and then I'll go. Committee report number 22-04-062 of the committee on education and culture, pertaining to their request. Uh, latter date, 11 March 2022, from the Office of the City Mayor, Number American Acosta, requesting this office budget to pass to the culture, authorizing it to enter into a memorandum of agreement for the granting of financial assistance to the City Government of Orketan to the Department of Education. The funding projects that the Department of Education are asking, uh, mainly, number one is the Internet Connectivity to the key personnel of the Department of Orketan's Education, amounting to 398,32 pesos. And number two is offline program of IWO Tapa and Macabre. So, number one is the Internet Connectivity to the key personnel of the Department of Education or Department of Education. This project supports the mandate of the Department during the pandemic, most particularly in the inventory and development programs, projects, and activities which are geared towards the promotion of quality, sensible, relevant, and liberating education to the learner. Key personnel of the Division Office take lead in their endeavor to provide technical assistance to students and teachers. As for the budgetary requirements and appropriation of Alita Luradi, chargeable against SB number one subsidy to end us the end in the Office of the City Mayor. Nonetheless, there were no other questions or concerns during the committee meeting. All were in consensus with the request of the City Mayor to authorize it to enter into a memorandum of agreement by the local government, meaning of Orketan, the Department of Education, that the financial assistance amounting to 398,32 pesos to be extended to the latter for the Internet Connectivity to the key personnel of the Department of Education or Orketan's Education. On behalf of the Committee on Education and Culture, this recommendation would like the recommend, adoption, and acceptance of committee report number 22-04-062, as well as passing on second and final reading the accompanying proposed resolution number 078-2022.
What about city resolution number 079?
I think I will.
There is a topic, okay. Uh, is there any comment? Remarked on the recommendation of the committee chair. There are a few regarding its committee report number 22-04-062 in relation to recommendations number one, passing on second and final reading, that proposed city resolution number 078-2022. The Chair Hirston, majority pro leader, please proceed for reading. Thank you for writing on the recommendation of the committee chair, committee on education and culture. With no objection, I shall move adoption of committee report number 22-04-062 and to pass on second and final reading. We have attached proposed city resolution, corresponding to this recommendation number one. The proposed city resolution number 078-2022. Is there any? There is a motion rather, there is a motion that personally committee report number 22-04-062 be accepted and the tax proposed city resolution number 078-2022 is to be passed on second and final reading. Is there any objection? Comment? The Chair Hirston, the motion is approved. Please proceed, Madam.
Yes, I would like to see, committee report number 22-04-062 on second and final, online of Waka. Project Waka was initiated by the Department of Education or Department of Education under the care of the school's solution superintendent, Rayna Romer, and was successfully implemented in 2021. In response to that, memorandum number 045 series of 2018, sustaining the implementation of the Buliyas sa Paaranan in public elementary and secondary schools nationwide, and now the program, uh, evolves into Makat Waka. So, ma is for number C, ka is for Kalaman C, wa is for Bialano, ha is for Kamabado, and pa is for Kapayo. It aims to address the shortage of supply of fruits and vegetables that will decrease incidents of malnutrition among children by ensuring continued supply of vegetables for school-based TV program and revitalizing school utilization, fully utilize and fully utilize the IWO school size for Buliyas sa Paaranan and food trace planting programs for the climate change motivation. Department of Education or Orketan's Education requested the LGU to continue expanding financial support towards the project offline of Waka amounting to 813,500 pesos. As per the budgetary requirements and appropriation resulted positively chargeable against SB number one subsidy to end us the end in the Office of the City Mayor. Nonetheless, there were no other questions or concerns raised during the committee meeting. All were in consensus with the request of the City Mayor as the recommendation of the committee to pass the resolution of the RCE to enter into a memorandum of agreement between the local government, meaning of Orketan, the Department of Education or Orketan's Education for the granting of financial assistance for the project offline of Waka amounting to 813,500 pesos, on behalf of the Committee on Education. And culture, I would like to pass the recommend and passing on second and final reading the proposed city resolution number 079-2022.
Um, is there any comment? Remarked for or against the recommendation of the committee chair, committee on education and culture, regarding its recommendation number two, passing on second and final reading the proposed city resolution number 079-2022 and this line. Chair Hirston, majority pro leader, please proceed.
Thank you for writing on the recommendation of the committee chair, committee on education and culture, corresponding to recommendation number two, committee report number 22-04-062. The attached proposed city resolution, number 079-2022, second and final reading.
It has been moved by the majority pro leader. Then, recommendation, recommendation number two, passing on second and final reading. The proposed city resolution number 079-2022 has explained. That if we pass on second and again, that if we pass on second and final reading. Is there any comment, remark, objection? Uh, Honorable Dona Aru, this deciding officer is, would like to know, what are the thinking of the resolutions, 813,000 pesos? And in the grand of the ability of the legislature?
And for Dona Aru, okay, that the question of the, of the, of the.
So, can you move the resolution of Dona Aru, the question?
Moa, Moa.
Ah, I see. Okay. Any more, would like to be clarified of anything related to the funding? Uh, Dona, the Chair Hirston? The motion is approved, including the adoption and acceptance of committee report number 22-04-062.
E. Committee report number 22-04-063, may I call in the committee chair, committee on education and culture? The honorable Dona Aru is written.
Thank you again, Sir Dona Aru, and I'm done. Committee report number 22-04-063, again, the committee on education and culture, pertaining to the latter date, 11 March 2022, from the Office of the City Mayor, Number American Acosta, requesting this office planning to pass the resolution authorizing it to enter into a memorandum of agreement by the local government. We need Orketan and the Department of Education for the financial assistance to be extended to the set institutions to obtain an monthly radio subscription fee for calendar year 2022, from January until December 2022. The Department of Education or Orketan's Education requested the City Government to continue extending financial assistance for the attainment of its monthly radio subscription fee amounting to 90,000 per month, for 10 months, in the total of 900,000 for calendar year 2022, to add that station 97.7 use radio for Orketan. Given so, the Department of Education and Orketan, city divisions far that if current and limited face-to-face classes, students and students are unable to participate in the face-to-face classes, still have the option to apply modular or radio-based instruction, also currently working modalities. After the face modalities over, 5,497 elementary units prefer radio-based instruction for junior high school students out of the 5,340 enrollings, 3,694 chose radio-based instructions. As to the budgetary accordance again, there is already a overation out payment chargeable against the subsidy within end gas, that that party by the Office of the City Mayor. Hearing other questions and concerns during the committee meeting offered strong support and consensus to run the request of the honorable City Mayor of Orketan, Acosta, hence the recommendation to pass the resolution authorizing it to enter into a memorandum of agreement by the local government for the local government to order Orketan and the Department of Education or Orketan's Education for the granting of financial assistance to the latter for the monthly radio subscription for calendar year 2022. On behalf of the Committee on Education and Culture, this presentation would like to recommend for the adoption and acceptance of committee report number 22-04-063 and to pass on second and final reading the accompanying proposed city resolution number 080-2022.
Is there any comment? Remarked on the recommendation of the committee chair, committee on education and culture, regarding its committee report number 22-04-063. And the tax proposed city resolution number 080-2022 that will be passed on second and final reading. The Chair Hirston. Majority pro leader, please proceed.
Thank you for writing on the recommendation of the committee chair, committee on education and culture, pertaining to the Moa by decree, the City Government of Orketan, the Department of Education, for financial assistance amounting to 900,000 pesos, to be extended to the latter of the payment of his monthly radio subscription for calendar year 2022, with no objection. I shall move adoption of committee report number 22-04-063. Together with this tax proposed city resolution number 080-2022, second and final reading.
It has been moved by the majority pro leader. That committee report number 22-04-063 of the committee on education and culture, be adopted and accepted, and that tax proposed city resolution number 080-2022 is, this line, is passed on second and final reading. Is there any objection? The Chair Hirston, the motion is approved.
I, committee report number 22-04-064, may I call in the committee chair, committee on financial protection and natural resources?
The, Lady.
Um, the vote, the vote, so, the Honorable Lady in the number one is recognized.
Um, thank you, majority for the idea, I'm just saying. Committee Report Number 22-04-064, Committee of Environmental Action and Natural Resources, since she was definitely found in such a condition, the first endorsement given to her by the Committee of 2022, and the Honorable City Mayor of Nariro, Costa, who wanted this office for the latter of even date, a distant name, I see, no, I see, City of Naro, requesting for ordinance and lobbying to sell regional street segments together with attached proposed ordinance number 09-22-2022. And ordinance to lay down the sale of native regional street segments at the beginning of the council of, with such other processes. Doctor Mokayao, the OIC of the City of Naro, spouted during the committee meeting that there is a potential for LGU to come to production and sell regional segments, considering the prolific amount of segments planted home and not sharing the LGU through the office more, so the vast and quality revenues of CIVI. Mister Karen, the second, the central officer, commanded surveillance provision of Doctor Mokayao with a long-term initiative in environmental efforts. Likewise, related offices support and monitor the kind of research that there are existing loss implications that need to be followed, especially for instance, work and ownership that we have and, long as it's working. Before this comment, aside from being a civilian, more than towards the environment sector, the sale of civilians should be realized, particularly LGU of Keta, the first LGU, the those special disabled hours, as being searched the segments that they only saw. Whereas the current manpower and natural resources, the local government agencies, particularly in City and Culture and Fishery's offices, it has expressed that the City Government could use at least 8,000 siblings in full above and towards this end, the local government of Keta's City should know and encourage the people to buy new people in the regional street. Siblings were purchased at willing homes, neighborhoods, farms and cities, as this case, village shall have been having expanding progress habitats, protect the naked species, plants and animals, lest that be inefficient and touch local resources, as if you're the lucky wood of the house, this city. The real matter concerned, raised during the meeting, has all worked in strong coordination manner, but it will not only under which the economic state and skin of the LGU that will also uplift general welfare without jeopardizing the continuous protection and preservation of the value of the city. Hence, the Committee deformed the request, Doctor Bukayo, and ordinance to lay down sale of new people for regional street segments. After a thorough discussion, together with the members of the Committee and representatives of the concerned offices, and was the consensus of the line, and most favorable recommendation of passing the first reading of the proposed ordinance number 09-22-2022, very much in agreement, and ordinance to lay down the sale of native street segments at the beginning of the council of, for such other processes. And please, Mr. beside you, in behalf of the Committee on Environment Protection and Natural Resources, and who will adoption of the document, the Committee Report Number 22-04-064, as well as the proposed ordinance number 09-2022, and ordinance to lay down the sale of native regional street segments at the beginning of the council of, for such other processes, on first reading.
Are you pro or not?
Yes, Mr. beside me, thank you.
Okay, um. Is there any? Uh, the recommendation is, uh, uh, the proposed ordinance be passed on, be considered the first reading.
First reading.
That is all, so the second topic, so the second one, is the question of the title of the ordinance, proposed ordinance.
Proposed city ordinance number 079-2022, the unity on environment protection and natural resources, and ordinance regulating the sale of native or regional street segments at the beginning of the council of, for such other processes.
Um, generally, not it, and the majority of the votes, of the proposed city ordinance number 079-2022.
May I respectfully, may I respectfully recommend? To refer to, proposed city ordinance number 079-2022, first reading, be considered on environment protection and natural resources.
Proposed city ordinance number 079-2022 is so referred. One, I'm here, this is, now, two, item two, this is for the day, proposed city resolution, ordinance, uh, item 2.2 for review. 2.2.8. 2.2. B. 2.2. C. 2.2. D. 2.2. T. All pertains to annual budget of the S. P. of the vice respected by the base. May I respectfully refer, item 2.2, the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriations. The whole, item 2.2, is referred to the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriations.
Item 2.3, letter dated 28 March 2022, from the Honorable City Mayor, General Mayor, M. Costa, requesting this office body to pass the resolution for adoption and approval of the proposed IRR for city ordinance number 903-2021. An ordinance establishing the civil society organization test and institutionalizing the People's Council in the City of Oroceta, defining the roles, participation and involvement in various programs, projects and activities the local government has required below, appropriating funds for form and effective effort. Item 2.3, the Committee on Social Service.
Item 2.3 is referred to the Committee on Social Service.
Item 2.4, letter dated 28 March 2022, from the Honorable City Mayor, General Mayor, M. Costa, requesting this office body to pass the resolution authorizing him to sign the H. T. P. and agreementation agreement for S. I. A. for the implementation of sustainable livelihood program of the D. S. W. D. in the city, may I respectfully refer, item 2.4, the Committee on Social Service.
Item 2.4, we introduce the Committee on Social Service.
Item 2.5, first enforcement dated 21 April 2022, from the Honorable City Mayor, General Mayor, M. Costa, forwarding to this office body, the letter dated 30 March 2022, from Elvis M. McCoys, District Drive Enforcement Agency for Pedelea, for Peter Commissioner, the Davis Occidental, with which the Pedelea aspired to grant to that for the construction of the Davis Occidental for bench out copies and canine or popping infection to cattle areas, through relation, may I respectfully, item 2.5, to the Committee on Land Use and Jowning and Committee on Vision Order and Dangerous Drugs for the Committee on Land Use and Jowning, as to leave, obviously.
Item 2.5 is so referred to the Committee mentioned.
Item 2.6, for information. A, first enforcement dated 28 March 2022, from the Honorable City Mayor, General Mayor, M. Costa, forwarding all others to this office body, the D. I. L. G. and Vice Way dated 26 March 2022, on subject, reiteration of the utilization of the local disaster risk reduction and management fund for information. Not then, B, letter dated 28 April 2022, from Police, Police General, Benjamin C. Orle Jr., President Director, Police Regional Office Ten, pertaining to the shooting incident that inspired December 22, 2021, at the city, the Davis Occidental, with assurance, the Police Regional Office Ten, to destroy all available sources for the resolution of this case to enter of justice and peace in the Davis Occidental for information.
Will you believe this note?
C, me. Letter dated 28 March 2022, from the Honorable City Mayor, General Mayor, M. Costa, addressed to the Honorable Commissioner, Governor, Spirit Titan, and W. Partners, this office body, expressing sincere gratefulness for the Commissioner's government, the nation of one unit, to hold our load and character of future to L. G. U. of Keta City for information.
Not then.
D, Secretary Order Number 016-2022, dated 24 March 2022, issued by the Honorable City Mayor, General Mayor, M. Costa, an order relating the local governance and city team in Oroceta City for information.
Secretary.
For the.
Okay, not then, B. Secretary Order Number 017-2022, dated 25 March 2022, issued by the Honorable City Mayor, General Mayor, M. Costa, an order relating the local public transport route plan scheme for the preparation of the local public transport route plan of Oroceta City for information. Letter dated 34, 34. Not then.
F. Memorandum Number 109-2022, dated 28 March, or rather 29 March 2022, issued by the Honorable City Mayor, General Mayor, M. Costa, addressed to City Attorney State or General U. Navy on subject, the nation of the Central Office for Information.
Not then.
G, first enforcement dated 28 March 2022, from the Office, the City Mayor, by Secretary of Justice, for Handing, Deputy General Junior, forwarding all others to this office body, the letter dated 2 December 2021. From Miss Maria Teres C. Fernandez, acting the Director for C. S. E., informing the political negotiation agreement for CNA between the management of City Government of Oroceta and the Oroceta City Government Employees Association, or O. L. I. A. is now registered, will certificate to the special number 2241, dated 28 in the number 2021 for information. H, first enforcement dated 30 March 2022, from the Honorable City Mayor, General Mayor, M. Costa, forwarding all others, the this office body, the Antonian, and the legal resolution number 152-22, dated 23 March 2022, a resolution approving the city ordinance number 906-2022 of this Antonian, and the soul of Oroceta City, an ordinance that in six months, tax holiday, to the food vendors, the city public market of Oroceta City for information.
Not then.
I, first enforcement dated 30 March 2022, from the Honorable City Mayor, General Mayor, M. Costa, forwarding all others to this office body, this Antonian, and the legal resolution number 198-22, dated 23 March 2022, a resolution authorizing the Honorable Governor, Spirit Titan, on behalf of the Commissioner's Government, the Davis Occidental, to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the City of Oroceta, represented by its Mayor, Honorable General Mayor, M. Costa, pertaining to the grant of financial assistance in amounts of 2 million pesos for the renovation of the extension office and fulfillment of office furniture and fixture for information. Using the G. Office of City, City Director, Richard, next to work, the month of July 2022, with net income 58,535 pesos for information. Not then, A, C. H. O., City Health Office Memorandum Number 016-2022, dated March 31, 2022, issued by City Health Company, for the mention of an office, addressed to Doctor, uh, Doctor Pedro, who are health issues, they charge the City Health Company, expected K. 4, 2022, under the reverse and comment for information.
Not then, Doctor. Thank you, my majority for listening. Uh, section and this for 50 minutes for, uh, the question for the.
The question.
Session, you. Is there any lady or gentleman who like to wonder a lot? As we are in, countries and vice versa, thank you. Uh, if there is not one among you who has planned to say something, this deciding officer would like to, uh, because this supervision that we have to congratulate ourselves, because once reminded of the rule, we don't observe the rule, and that is, I'd like to be, uh, for world uh, that we have, uh, for today, uh, the has love, maybe, and, uh, because, this really is into a far some laws of Keta. Um. That the one who is, uh, of the record, certainly, that not, 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 uh, not, uh, but, could consider, uh, not, so, not, uh, losing faith the, the, you know, who, jury, who, the chief, though that losing faith.
The country, and the state, the United States, and the US. I'm just coming, some of the people, and the others, the United States, and the US. Okay, so, let me say, I'm gonna say.
Objection, the committee is, the session, brother, is adjourned.